Council, let's go ahead and get started. All right. Good evening and welcome everyone to the January 7th, 2020, Federal Way City Council. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, thank you very much for coming this evening. We have some very special events planned for our council members that will be sworn in and also we've got a reception that will follow. But I want to let everybody know, we've got King County Superior Court Judge Leroy McCullough that is here. Your Honor, if you could wave your hand, let's give him a big Federal Way welcome. And we have our own hometown judge, federal municipal court judge David Larson, who will be here as well. And they will be swearing in council members Lydia Asafa Dawson, council member Susan Honda, council member Mark Copeng, and council member Linda Coachmar. And so I think they'll be going, taking turns on which individual council members they swear in. So with that, I will turn it over to your honors.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor and all of the honorable members of the council, good evening. And to all of you, good evening.
Good evening.
This is a wonderful, wonderful occasion, and I'm so excited to be here to recognize all of the people who have given their lives to the advancement of this wonderful community. And to my special family friend, council member Lydia Asafa Dawson. And if council member Dawson would join me here, we will administer the oath. I would like for her family and friends to come and surround her for this momentous occasion. Come on, son. You lead the charge. Yes. She's going to stand in front, and I'm going to ask you to form a half circle behind her to hold her up in case she gets overcome with emotion. So if, for those of you who don't know, Federal Way is the crown jewel of the Pacific Northwest. And one of the things that I like about it is that it represents a lot of inclusiveness. She, Lydia Asafa Dawson, is the epitome of that. She is a wonderful, brilliant woman with three wonderful, brilliant children, and she's got some brilliant people supporting her and surrounding her. She's got a brilliant city council that she's going to work with. And all of you that are here will continue to work with her to make this the best Federal Way term ever. Yes?
Yeah.
All right. So with that, I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand, Lydia, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Lydia Asafa Dawson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I am a citizen of the United States
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the State of Washington.
And of the State of Washington.
That I will support
That I will support.
The Constitution
The Constitution.
And laws
And laws.
Of the United States
Of the United States.
The Constitution
The Constitution.
And laws
And laws.
Of the State of Washington
Of the State of Washington.
And the laws
And the laws.
And ordinances
Ordinances.
Of the great city of Federal Way.
The great city of Federal Way.
And that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully
And impartially
And impartially.
Perform and discharge
Perform and discharge.
The duties of the office
The duties of the office.
Of City Council Position Number One
Of City Council Position Number One.
In and for
In and for
The city of Federal Way
The city of Federal Way.
Washington
Washington.
According to the law
According to the law.
And the best
And the best.
Of my ability.
Of my ability.
Now, before you say congratulations, we can also say Merry Christmas because this is the Orthodox Christmas, and we want to give council member Dawson the rest of the day off. Merry Christmas. Congratulations. Comments? All right.
Well, Judge McCullough is a tough act to follow, but I'll do my best. Susan Honda is our next person that's going to have the oath administered. I asked her about family beforehand, and Bruce is here, but he's going to be taking pictures. So Susan's going to be up here, and I'm going to administer the oath. The thing I like about administering oaths is it talks about the Constitution of the State of Washington and the United States, and that's something that's very important to us all. It's our lifeblood. It's the soul of our country. Congratulations. Come right up here. Okay, raise your right hand. I, Susan Honda
I, Susan Honda.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I am a citizen of the United States
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the State of Washington
And of the State of Washington.
And I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States
And of the Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Federal Way
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Federal Way.
That I will faithfully and impartially
I will faithfully and impartially
Perform and discharge the duties of the office
Perform and discharge the duties of the office.
Of City Council Position Number Three
Of City Council Position Number Three.
In and for the city of Federal Way, Washington
In and for the city of Federal Way, Washington.
According to the law
According to the law.
And the best of my ability.
And the best of my ability.
Congratulations. And Judge McCullough is going to do, council member Copeng.
Position number five. All right. So is, would you like family members to join you? All right, you're good right here. So this is a very confident man. And he knows that all of you are here to support him in this work, and I am honored to be able to administer the oath to you. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Mark Copeng.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the State of Washington
And of the State of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws
And laws.
Of the United States
Of the United States.
The Constitution
The Constitution.
And laws of the State of Washington
And laws of the State of Washington.
And
And.
The laws and ordinances
The laws and ordinances.
Of the city of Federal Way
The city of Federal Way.
And that I will faithfully
That I will faithfully.
And impartially
And impartially.
Perform and discharge the duties of the office
Will faithfully and
Perform and discharge
Perform and discharge
The duties
The duties of the office.
Yes. Of City Council Position Number Five
Of City Council Position Number Five.
In and for the great city of Federal Way
In and for the great city of Federal Way.
Washington
Washington.
According to the law
According to the law.
And the best of my ability.
And the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Last but not least, council member Coachmar. When Ms., and the family of Linda Coachmar needs to come forward if they would. And one thing, that little thing that a lot of people don't notice, a lot of people do know, is my father was the best man at Linda's wedding. That's how long I've known Linda. So this is, this is special for me because Linda's been a family friend for 40 years.
Yeah, he's just a youngster. This little child, the baby, is now two. Mommy next to her is 22, and I held her in my arms first time.
Cool. So Okay, raise your right hand. I, Linda Coachmar
I, Linda Coachmar.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I am a citizen of the United States
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the State of Washington
And of the State of Washington.
That I'll, that I'll support the Constitution and laws of the United States
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington
The Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Federal Way
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Federal Way.
That I will faithfully and impartially
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge the duties of the office
Perform and discharge the duties of the office.
Of City Council Position Number Seven
Of City Council Position Number Seven.
In and for the city of Federal Way, Washington
In and for the city of Federal Way, Washington.
According to the law
According to the law.
And the best of my ability
And the best of my ability.
Congratulations. It was also Position Seven, which is Mickey Mantle's number in my favorite baseball book. So anyway, thank you very much. On behalf of Judge McCullough and I, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, your honors. And let's give our elected council members. All right, and now it's time for the election of our
Mayor.
Oh, yes.
Real quick, can I recognize another newly elected person in the audience?
Please.
And that person is Laura Belvin. Would you raise your hand or stand up? She is a new Lake Haven Commissioner.
Congratulations. And a longtime Parks Commissioner and chairman of the Parks Commission. Yeah, so Commissioner Belvin, congratulations, and thank you so much for all the work you've done, not only for the city of Federal Way, but our community. And good luck with your new assignment. Okay, now, thank you. And Councilmember Coachmar, did you wish to say a few words now that you're newly on the council? Or returning to the council?
Well, I'm historic. I'm just not prehistoric. But I did bring you a present.
Oh.
I did. And this is from 1998, and this was given to me when I was first on the council in position number two, which council member Johnson now sits in. And it was from Mayor Gins, Ron Gins, who was our fourth mayor. And what it says is, it says, "Federal Way, a great place to live, learn, work, and play. Celebrate Federal Way." And it's a paperweight.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
What I really want to say is, really quickly, is that four years is a very short time. I have a lot of things that I would like to work on for the community. I'd like to thank all the supporters who were wonderful helping me. Would you all raise your hands? All the, all the doors we knocked on. Maureen, thank you so much. And my former legislative aide, Joe Atkinson, is here from Olympia. We, we, we work so hard. Thank you so much. I wouldn't be here without you, and I sincerely appreciate that. I do want to work on crime. I want to work on homelessness. One of the major things that I think we need to do for the city is to bring in revenue. And I certainly do know how to lobby. I certainly do know how to have a lot of contacts in both the federal and state level, and really want to work to make this community a place that we are very proud to call our home and to live, learn, work, and play. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. And also, Councilmember Copeng, would you like to say a few words?
I wasn't prepared to, but boy, I tell you, can't turn down the opportunity, can't I?
Exactly. Yeah.
No, I, I'm honored to be able to continue to serve the city of Federal Way. It's, I've been here since 1976. It's become a part of my life in a way that, you know, a city can. It just needs to be participated in. And I think that what I've found is that for everything that I've given to the city, I've gotten more in return than I could have ever asked for. And the relationships that I've created, the friendships that have been formed in my time of service are truly friendships that I cherish. And I, again, I look forward to my ser, my continued service to the city with optimism for the positive changes that we can implement as a council and the good thing, the good work that we can do to create both trust and, and positive momentum moving forward. So again, honored and privileged to serve. Thank you.
Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. You didn't know what to call me.
I've been calling you deputy mayor for two years, so.
I thought you were going to call me Councilmember Tran for a minute, but I just want to, to thank everyone for being here tonight, and it is an honor and a privilege to be on the city council. And it's not something I take lightly at all. It's, it's a great responsibility to, to represent the people of Federal Way. And I appreciate that you have selected me to come back for four more years to do that. So thank you very much. And I'd like to thank my mother and father-in-law, if they're still here, for their help in the campaign, and for my husband. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. And council member Asafa Dawson.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, everyone, for being here. It's always a pleasure to see people in the audience because sometimes I feel like we talk to the chairs. But that said, I'm honored to be back here with the council members that I've worked with and duly appreciated the past, how many years I've been here? Five and a half. And so I look forward to continuing that relationship, continuing working with you all. And welcome, Linda. You were way back when, you were one of the council members that really helped me. When I decided to join the council, you were one of the people I called. And so to call you a colleague now is incredible. So thank you, and I appreciate it. And I look forward to working with you as a colleague. And then Merry Christmas to my Ethiopian family who are here today. Thank you. And I look forward to serving this community once again. And thank you for the opportunity.
Well, congratulations, everybody, and it's an honor to serve with you. So, all right. Now we're going to move on to item C, the election of deputy mayor, and then the oath of office. We still have a judge in the, your honor, keep that robe on. So I'm going to outline the process, and then we'll, then we'll start it. This is under presentation 3C, election of deputy mayor and oath of office. Appendix A of the council rules provide the procedure for electing the deputy mayor, which is as follows. Number one, any council member may nominate a candidate. No second is needed. Nominations are closed by a motion, second, and two-thirds vote of council. If only one nomination is made, it is appropriate to make a motion and obtain a second to instruct the city clerk to cast a unanimous ballot for that nomination. Approval is by majority vote of council members present. If more than one nomination is made, an open election is conducted by roll call vote. To be elected, the nominee needs a majority vote of the council. Elections will continue until a deputy mayor is elected by a majority vote of the council. The mayor should declare the nominee receiving the majority vote as the new deputy mayor. The clerk shall swear the deputy mayor into office. Oh, so the clerk's going to swear the deputy mayor into office. False alarm, your honor. Okay. So at this time, sorry. So I'll open the floor for nominations for deputy mayor.
Mayor.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you. I nominate Susan Honda to be the deputy mayor.
There's a nomination for Susan Honda as deputy mayor. Council, council member Tran.
I was going to nominate Councilwoman
Councilmember Honda is nominated twice. Going, council member Asafa Dawson.
Susan Honda.
She's nominated a third time. All right.
And I'll second that.
And there's been a second. All right. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? At this time, I will close nominations, and it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of council member Susan Honda for deputy mayor.
I.
I.
All those opposed? Congratulations. We have a new deputy mayor. Oh, that's right. We'll do it after that. Okay. And after, after we do the oath, we're going to have, have a brief reception I'll talk about in just a moment.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name
I, Susan Honda.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Solemnly swear or affirm.
That I am a citizen of the United States
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And the State of Washington
And the State of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States
And laws of the United States.
The Constitution
The Constitution.
And laws of the State of Washington
And laws of the State of Washington.
And the laws and ordinances
And the laws and ordinances.
Of the city of Federal Way
The city of Federal Way.
That I will faithfully and impartially
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge
Perform and discharge.
The duties of the office
Duties of the office.
Of deputy mayor
Deputy mayor.
In and for
In and for
City of Federal Way, Washington
City of Federal Way, Washington.
According to the law
According to the law.
And the best of my ability. Congratulations.
All right. All right. And deputy mayor, did you want to say just a few words?
Thank you for your support, and I will do my best to serve as deputy mayor. Please let me know if anything I can do better, or, but thank you very much for your support. I appreciate it.
All right. That's great. Okay. All right, everybody. We're going to have a brief reception. Let's call it, it's a few minutes to seven. Let's say 7:15, but let's be really good about it this time. Whenever we have these, it's, it's hard to stop once we get started with a fun reception. So 7:15, we'll be back on the record. And congratulations, everybody. All right. Congratulations.
All right, let's go ahead and get started. Before we go into the emerging issues and report and council reports, we're going to have a presentation. It'll be with Jen. Jen Barber, you want to introduce our performers here?
These four students are all violin students from the Federal Way School of Music. And I'd like you to say hello to Keith, to Natalie, to Odessa, and to Dolores. Thank you. On behalf of the Federal Way Lions Club, we are very appreciative of the City of Federal Way and all, and the council for attending and helping and supporting our first ever Make Music Federal Way in June of 2019. We're looking forward to next year's. And because today is the 7th of January, the song we've picked out, the fiddle tune, is called "The Eighth of January." You might have heard of it as the Battle of New Orleans. So this is actually, tomorrow is actually an historical day, and these four young people are going to be performing for you. Thank you. Several people in this community have partnered with us to help build Make Music Federal Way for this year and for the future.
Mr. Mayor and council, it's a pleasure to be here. And we simply want to affirm that music is therapy. It's either listening is important, but participating is truly important, as we've seen tonight. You know, it starts at the youngest age. There are some musicians that have been playing music before they could walk, but it goes the gamut. And for senior citizens, music is therapy. It's something that brings out a cheerful spirit and brings out hope. So what we really are looking for in our community is more opportunity to get together with musicians. It's more than listening to your device with earbuds, and it doesn't have to be drumsticks, or guitar picks, or violin bows. There are so many different instruments that can be musical, but it is tremendous for our community. It builds community, and it brings folks together of all ages for tapping their feet and laughing, whether we're in the school system, or in the retirement homes and convalescent homes of our city. So making music in Federal Way for 2020 is a natural high. It's something that's very good for us. So we're encouraging all of us to dig out our musical instruments, or if you don't have one, borrow one from somebody, and let's make music together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving us this time.
All right. Great job, you guys. Thank you. Okay, now, we have the mayor's issue, mayor's emerging issues and report. We have our Martin Luther King Junior Day Celebration at Thomas Jefferson High School on January 20th at 11:00 a.m. Actually, it's at the Performing Arts and Events Center, but I believe it's being led by the Thomas Jefferson High School students. That'll be at 11:00 a.m. on MLK Day. We've got our City Council annual retreat at Dumas Bay Center on February 1st at 8:30 a.m. That's a Saturday. We have, there will be oral argument before the Washington State Supreme Court on January 16th, that's next Thursday regarding the water sewer tax issue. And then we've got the 13th Washington State Korean American Day Celebration. In Seattle, it's on January 13th, and here in Federal Way, it's on Saturday, the 18th, at 5:00 p.m. to 6:30. And again, that's on P. Front Row by our way. With council committee reports, actually, we don't really have a, Deputy Mayor, how would you like to proceed? Committee assignments have not been done yet.
They still have reports from what, yeah, from previous.
Okay, so.
The same committee chair should talk.
Very good. Very good. Okay, with lodging tax, Councilmember Moore?
That's right. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. The January LTAC meeting scheduled for tomorrow, actually, my apologies. So we're gonna be, you know, Mr. Mayor, if I may request, I'd like to report when you come back.
You bet. Okay.
Thank you.
Land use, Councilmember Copeng?
We had a good discussion last night on a number of issues, one of which was the proposal on addressing panhandling in our city, and the potential of doing signs or outreach of some other kind to make sure that the community knows that we're listening to them, and that we certainly understand. So we're looking at that conversation continuing at the next Land Use and Transportation Committee next month. One of the other things we did, and this is a good project, I think, if anybody's been on Sacagawea, or by Sacagawea on Dash Point Road, they'll notice that we have a very nice sidewalk, and then it stops. And then we have a very nice sidewalk, again, starting up at the, ones in front of the church, and the others in front of the ball field. And there's this gap, and it is referred to as the gap. In this project, we are closing the gap with a new sidewalk and improvements. The good news on that, and it's not been approved by the council yet, but we'll be going to the consent agenda at the next meeting, but one of the things I wanted to call attention to was regarding available funding. And for that, we're used, for city funds, we're using the motor vehicle fuel tax, and we're using a transportation improvement board funding. But in addition to that, we're using savings from three different projects, and those three different projects total over $600,000, or $600,000, and almost constitute half of the project for the city. So again, I just wanted to commend the Public Works Department. They're a good work in creating savings for the multiple projects that we do during the year, and creating the opportunity for us to complete a project that has long been waiting, and will certainly create a safer transit for the school students that are attending Sacagawea. So anyway, that's my report.
All right. And now for the Parks Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the next meeting for Parks will be next Tuesday, January 14th, here in City Council Chambers at 5:00 p.m. One of the highlights we'll be discussing is a quarterly crime report by the chief. We established this last year. About four times a year, we'll have a crime update, and so the chief will be talking about, you know, some of the recent crime in the city, as well as just a general update. So that's next Tuesday, the 14th, at 5:00 p.m.
All right. Councilmember Sephardosan, with regard to the Public Issues Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And there was supposed to be a meeting tomorrow night, Wednesday, but it's been canceled, and the next meeting is gonna be February the 2nd, Wednesday.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, and thanks for your work. All right, Deputy Mayor, report.
Thank you. We have several commission positions open, and I don't have the list of commissions because I didn't write it down this evening, but they're in the elevator. I think we have six commissions that have openings, and we'd like those applications in by January 31st, so you have plenty of time. You can go online, and you can look at the commissions, and if there's something that you're interested in doing, you can fill out an application, and when there's an opening, we would call you for an interview. These are all voluntary, voluntary positions, and we really need your input as citizens of Federal Way. So please look at that and consider volunteering to help us do our job here at the council. And the council retreat, we do invite the public, and we look forward to having you there, and we'll be getting that information to you closer to the retreat.
Great. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, that is what we have for the council reports. Next is the most important part of the meeting, citizen comment. And I'll introduce the speakers, and then we'll have people be able to essentially line up or be ready in the queue. First, we'll have Dana Holloway, then Catherine Festa, then Gary Grant, then Aram Kim, and then Jeffrey McAnally, Tammy Campbell, Casey Moore, Rebecca Bebek, Stephen Moore, and then that's it so far. Okay, Dana Holloway.
Good evening. My name is Dana Holloway. I would like to welcome Councilmember Linda Kochmar as the only new person joining the City Council, and congratulate the other members who took their oath of office tonight. Each City Council member has their own reasons and motivation for running for City Council. I respect your personal commitment to serve. I ask that each would work to clarify, identify and prioritize the most critical challenges and issues facing Federal Way, and focus on those this year. To create a five, 10, and 20-year plan with milestones to implement that plan. To increase revenue to fund the city's biennial budgets. To improve infrastructure necessary to support the 100,000 residents we now have in Federal Way, in addition to those who work in, visit, or commute through Federal Way. There needs to be a real plan in place to mitigate the disruption to businesses and traffic from sound transit, light rail construction from Angle Lake to South 320th Street, and how riders are going to get to that link station since there will not be enough parking spaces. The city needs to proactively influence sound transit's choice of the location for the Tacoma Dome light rail, and stop the Sound Transit Board from locating their OMF operations maintenance facility in Federal Way. As a person who has lived in Federal Way for 43 years, I am disappointed in what has happened to our city in the last several years, from homeless encampments creating unsanitary conditions, reduced preventative maintenance on our streets, city debt, property theft, shoplifting, car break-ins. I could go on, but we all live here, and we all know what's happening on a daily basis. The good news, there are many committed volunteers and nonprofits, organizations who work freely to make Federal Way a better place. And city staff have been exceptional at finding and applying for grant money for city projects that otherwise would not have happened. Thank you, city staff and directors. It's a new year with many challenges. The city's future is in your hands. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dana. Catherine Festa?
Hello. Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, and council members, and congratulations. I'm here on behalf of all home of King County to remind you that it's Countess In time. It's a point-in-time count. It'll be Friday, January 24th, at 2:00 a.m., and it'll be all night long. They do serve you breakfast, and we don't have very many people have signed up yet. So I put it on my page on Facebook, and I also put it on a couple of the Federal Way pages. If anybody else needs the information, just let me know. But I know that Deputy Mayor Honda is always there, so I don't know if you haven't signed up yet or not, but anybody else that wants to sign up, that'd be great. We could use all the help we can get. We only have 10 people signed up so far. That's really bad. We need 30.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Okay, Gary Grant.
Hello, I'm Gary Grant. My concern tonight is the parking situations in Federal Way regarding waste management. It's a big issue right now. There are signs, I believe, that are already up. There's been locations to put other signs up so that people do not park in certain areas, mostly cul-de-sacs, on garbage day. This is not gonna work, because what they're trying to do is appease one company. We have a problem with large trucks going in and out of those same areas seven days a week. We also have a parking problem with the cul-de-sacs that they're already trying to keep people from parking on. So those people aren't gonna have a place to park when they're moving to accommodate this one company. Now, we have another issue because we don't pass information along. The island at my house was made smaller after six years of me fighting with the city to do something. We had waste management come out with their truck to see what the problem was. They agreed that the cul-de-sacs were just too small, even with the trucks that they had. It had too jockey to get around. After eight years of fighting, we had that circle reduced. The city goes in and has curbing redone. The curbing was put back to the original dimensions. When I brought it up at this council, Marwan and one of his assistants were sent out to take measurements. They gave a report that it was at the new dimensions. I was sarcastically told by Jim Farrell that we're done. We're not gonna do anything else. Well, not only are they trying to put a circle around there, a sign around there for no parking, or something that was fixed, they were going to put a sign two and a half feet off of my driveway, which is not in that circle, for no parking. And when I called and asked about it, I was told, oh, they didn't think it would be a big issue because the sign was gonna go in front of a rose bush, so we wouldn't see it from the house. The fact that my area in front of my house, it shouldn't be included in that at all, doesn't resonate. So exactly what are we doing here? Now, the original plan for that was in 2009.
Mr. Grant, your three minutes are up. You can look and, like, say a closing sentence if you'd like.
Yes. Why aren't we looking out for the citizens as well as the companies that are being paid to service our citizens?
Mr. Grant, would you like a follow-up phone call from our Public Works Director tomorrow?
No.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll have somebody, perhaps somebody from my office reach out to you. Thank you very much. Aram Kim.
Good evening, Federal Way City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. The reason why I'm speaking is because I, my family has been in Federal Way since 1989, and the reason why my family moved here as hard-working Korean immigrants was that it was a safe, beautiful, just very pleasant place to live along the I-5 corridor and the midway point between Tacoma and Seattle, which is where my parents worked. Well, over the years, I'm a Federal Way High School graduate, I have heartbreakingly seen the very fast deterioration of our city, and it is overrun by panhandlers, homeless people, drug addicts, and it's just, something has to be done. And there's a host of issues that I could speak on tonight, but the main one that I came to present to you is the issue of panhandling. And I believe that it's a multi-prolonged problem with roots that are really quite simple. And one of them is panhandling. And I cannot go maybe two minutes down the road from my house, which, by the way, new developments for a box are like half a million dollars now per house, but I can't go more than two minutes from there and see panhandlers hijacking every street corner. And it's embarrassing. It's humiliating. It's embarrassing. It's a disgrace. It's shameful. And I have seen this rapid proliferation of this, what I would call a social scourge, for the past seven years. It is not getting better, and in fact, it is getting worse. And I think it's just common sense, and it goes without saying, but we know what these people are out there doing. And then they go out into our green spaces and get strung out, and then leave all of their refuse for everybody else to pick up. And, you know, I work my tail off for what I have. My parents have worked, you know, 30 years in, you know, public service. You know, they're 68 years old, still working their tails, their tails off, and they deserve a better community. They deserve, you know, better than having sirens go, you know, all, you know, all night for god knows what, you know, to turn on the television to hear, oh, there was another homicide in Federal Way. It's embarrassing, and it's more than embarrassing. It's urgent. And so I've been told that, you know, oh, we, you know, people on City, the City Council think, oh, panhandling's not that big of an issue. It is an issue. I don't know where your head's been. It's an issue. It's been an issue for seven years. And I have, I have emailed nonstop. I have called the mayor's office, and it's, nothing's being done. So I'm asking for action, an action plan that can yield measurable results, and, you know, not getting a formal letter back, you know, by, via email saying, oh, thank you for your interest. So I'm just urging you. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Jeffrey McAnally.
Mayor Farrell and members of the City Council, as board president of the Schools, I'm here this evening to share concerns with hope of finding a path forward. As the school district and the city are stewards of our community and tax money, I think it's important that we partner and provide the best experience for our community on all issues at the policy level. I attended a meeting in September at the E S C that was organized by Dr. Campbell and her team that included Mayor Farrell, E.J. and Brian to discuss permit delays with Mirror Lake, Lake Grove and Wildwood Elementary Schools. While I understand the mayor is a busy person, having him check his watch all throughout the meeting and leaving early made it seem that the district's concerns were not going to be taken seriously. The school district team presented that their biggest concern was the permit for Mirror Lake, which was now in its fourth pass. I was surprised that it had to take the fourth pass and heard that it was explained that each time the school district had provided and requested information with the three previous passes, the city would bring forward a new obstacle. The newest request involved signage requirements, and I was again surprised that we would delay an entire project for signage that already existed and was currently being used. Why wasn't a provisional permit issued and allowed the work to move forward and stop the loss of tax money as we now waited for the city to provide the permit? I understand that codes change and updates may be necessary, but it seems that this should have been one of the last requirements needed before a new school opens. When it was the city's turn to share, it was clear that Mayor Farrell believed that all the issues belonged with the school district. There was no feeling of partnership or mutual agreement to ensure that the safe stewardship of taxpayer money. In the months following, there have been several articles in the Mirror that included concerns shared by the chamber in their survey of commercial businesses struggling with the same permitting issues and delays. Also, in a public entity meeting I attended in October, a fire commissioner shared that he was having the same struggles with the city and getting their permitting completed and having impact delays. The latest article in the Mirror is why I'm here this evening. There continues to be misinformation and finger-pointing occurring instead of recognition that the district is a customer who is at this point paid over 1.5 million dollars to the city for a service. We are well within our right to provide feedback for our service, and we are doing everything possible to get these schools open in a timely manner to manage our taxpayers' dollars wisely. Mayor Farrell indicated that the school district didn't reach out until August of 2019, and the normal process takes fifteen to eighteen months. I observed the bond planning meetings in 2016 and found it interesting that the city only had one individual that sat on that committee, which was Chief Wong. As soon as the bond passed, the school district reached out to the city in the first meeting that was set in February of 2018 to ensure things went smoothly. We should be using the date as the starting point of the fifteen to eighteen months versus the August date that was indicated in the paper. The timeframe for the completion should be May to July of 2019, not November 2019, when we finally got all three permits. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Tammy Campbell, Director Campbell and Dr. Kim.
Good evening, members of the council, Deputy Mayor Honda and Mayor Farrell. As superintendent, I'm here representing our 23,000 students, their families and 3,000 employees. I know that problem-solving, complex issues are never solved by newspapers or even public comment, like I'm doing tonight. However, I must address misinformation that you've been provided. I'm joined today by our team of school construction experts who have built hundreds, I want to say that again, hundreds of schools across dozens of districts and jurisdictions. They work with us every single day. What I'm sharing with you, we shared with Mayor Farrell and his team at a meeting in September that I initiated, to engage in reflection on how things were going and to share concerns about process delays that I was hearing from almost every member of my team, and to problem-solve these issues of concern. By our nature, we collaborate with the city as partners, but this time was different, and that we were now a customer in a relationship, and was, we were essentially at the mercy of the city to accomplish our goals, and we're now experiencing some of the same frustrations that many businesses, CEOs that I've talked with and organizations have shared related to the permitting process. During the September meeting, when we shared our concerns, we were told there was nothing the city would do to improve. What business would give this type of a response to a client or customer? We believe effective organizations listen and take feedback and continue to get better and not have a hostile sort of culture in responding to that feedback. It is important to note that we're building schools in Kent and King County and are already seeing a difference in how they operate, resulting in processes that are less onerous, time-consuming and costly. We are, after all, representing our taxpayers. I want to address several examples of misinformation. The first was that we did not consult with the city about bond planning. This is not true. I personally, in the summer of 2016, reached out to the mayor's office because we launched our Bond Planning Committee, a group of seventy community members who laid out the timeline, the cost of the schools. The only person, as you heard earlier, who attended was the chief of police. No one from our planning department was joining, even though we sent the invite. Additionally, within months of passing our bond, months, on February twenty-seventh of 2018, we reached out again to the city to meet about the scope of the project, our unique needs as a school entity, and timelines for construction. The mayor and members of the planning team attended this meeting where we heard failure was not an option. We had, the other piece of misinformation is that we had an artificial timeline. Schools start and stop in September and June, which means you don't have a lot of wiggle room due to the-
Dr. Campbell, hold on just a second. Did we put her down for three minutes? Could you please expand that to full five?
Thank you. I appreciate that. We had an artificial timeline. Schools start and stop in September and June, which means you don't have a lot of wiggle room due to the needs related to childcare, parent job schedules, and so much is dependent on this, which creates a very unique sense of construction urgency in the school-related construction field. There was nothing artificial about this. Our, the other, the third thing that I want to tackle is this notion that our team is somehow not qualified and we were submitting poor-quality work. I categorically deny this statement, and the comments of the professionals who will follow me will illustrate my point. Lastly, responsiveness and customer service to the client is what this is about. As the customer, we're well within our rights to raise concerns that we believe would have prevented some cost delays. The cost of building a school in Federal Way should not be more than our surrounding districts. Our hope is that going forward, there are lessons learned so that these outcomes are not repeated. Every organization can get better, everyone, including the city planning team, just as the district is reflecting on how we can as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Casey Moore.
Good evening, council members. My name is Casey Moore. I'm the Director of Capital Programs for Federal Way Public Schools. I'm here this evening to provide some clarity to recent public comments regarding the significant schedule and cost impacts we have experienced to three of our elementary school projects as a result of the permitting processes through the city of Federal Way. As the Director of Capital Programs, I come to the district with over thirty years of experience in the construction and design industry, having worked for a large general contractor, as a licensed architect designing K-12 facilities for twenty-five years, as a capital projects manager for Department of Social and Health Services, and as the Director of the School, State School Construction Grant Program. During this time, I facilitated the successful execution of dozens of projects in numerous jurisdictions for projects totaling well over a billion dollars in current value. The district additionally supported through engagement with some of the industry's most experienced consultants in project management, design and construction, several of whom you will hear from later tonight. Prior to starting design on any of the projects, we initiated a meeting on February twenty-seventh, 2018, with the city of Federal Way planning staff to review the project schedules, identify challenges, and establish goals. We revised our project schedules in response to the city of Federal Way review timelines with the goal of having all projects permitted by June of 2019. The district met all of the target milestones. However, full project permits were not received for all the projects until October thirteenth, twenty-third of 2019, resulting in an average of three and a half months delay and an approximate cost of $25,000 per day per project. The city of Federal Way agreed to engage outside consultants to assist with the permit review at additional costs to the district. Currently permitting fees are over $500,000 per project for projects that are $31 million and 60,000 square feet. As a comparison, we are permitting our Thomas Jefferson High School project for $200,000. It is $100 million and 240,000 square feet, and that has been permitted to King County. The perception of incompetence, incomplete or inaccurate documents being submitted is the result of the permitting process not allowing the design team to obtain clarifications to permit requirements prior to the submittal of documents for review. In submitting documents for permit review, the following are some examples, particular to our working with the city of Federal Way, that we have made, that have made the permitting process challenging for our team. Review comments were vague and unclear, requiring design team to seek clarifications or guess how to make changes and subsequent review comments. Code interpretations that were inconsistent with our team's experience in other jurisdictions, such as making a crosswalk on a hill that was not accessible. Project review by persons and not department resulting delays for review based on personal schedules and inconsistency between review comments. Review comments requiring corrections that had no effect on public health safety, such as the wording on public signs and traffic signs. Challenges aside, moving forward, we will continue to collaborate with the city of Federal Way by applying lessons learned and focusing on the successful delivery of school facilities for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Rebecca Bevac of Integris Architecture.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the council and the mayor. My name is Rebecca Bevac, and I'm a principal architect with over twenty-five years' experience. The team that I work with at Integris Architecture has a deep history in this market, and over the last twenty years, we have designed over 150 K-12 schools in this region with a construction cost exceeding 2.5 billion. I share this context as it's through our depth of experience and perspective that we have developed a seasoned understanding of what is the appropriate schedule for permitting and design of facilities. The schedule that Federal Way Public Schools provided us for these three elementary schools was in alignment with our typical experience working in neighboring jurisdictions in replacement elementary schools. Despite this experience, our experience with the city of Federal Way and the Federal Way Public Schools began with a spirit of collaboration, and I personally sat in many meetings where the mayor and superintendent Campbell talked about all the team members need to work together to really achieve our mutual goal to replace these aging elementary schools on the timeline that was outlined. But as the process progressed, we unexpectedly experienced a lack of cooperation from the city's team that delayed the review process in a fashion that did not provide a betterment of health and safety conditions for the constituents of Federal Way, and I will share a few examples. We submitted extensive hard copies of documents per checklist and were told that our permit submittals were complete. Yet it took a month after we had not received word from the Lake Haven Water and Sewer District to discover that though the city of Federal Way required submittal of documents for the water district, they did not route them, and it was the responsibility of the school district to carry the drawings to the water district. This was our first indication of a lack of communication amongst public agencies. Another example to share is that the city was interpreting the code in ways that were not consistent with other jurisdictions' interpretation of the code, and required the design engineer to educate the city's team on the code's intent and how to apply it. Specifically, this occurred when the school district, when the city required the school district to provide flow control mitigation for stormwater runoff from landscaped areas that were going to be landscaped areas at the completion of the project. This, this requirement would cost the school district millions of dollars. This was not a requirement that was intended by the code, nor was it consistent with how other jurisdictions interpreted the code. In the end, this requirement was lifted, yet it took months of negotiation. A similar example related to the comment by the city to create an accessible crosswalk that Casey mentioned, on a road that had a natural, steep incline. This comment was vague and seemed an error. Yet when the design team sought clarity from the city, the city was not able to provide any other direction than to regrade an extension, extensive portion of the road. As this was unrealistic and not resolved after multiple discussions, the school district team reached out to both an independent accessibility consultant and the King County roads to help provide an interpretation that eventually was accepted by the city for this item. The design team was able to provide documentation to achieve an accessible crosswalk to the maximum extent feasible, yet it took extensive cost and effort to resolve unrealistic and unexpected requirements by the city of Federal Way. I could provide many more examples where the city has created undue process that has not resulted in the betterment of the facilities being provided by the school district for the community, as in in actuality prevented the district from delivering these projects on time and within the budgets anticipated.
All right, and Steve Moore.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council and mayor. My name is Stephen Moore. I'm a senior project manager with C B R E Hiri. I've been working in the K-12 industry as a project manager for twenty years. C B R E, C B R E Hiri has worked for over thirty districts, completing 175 projects, representing an excess of $5 billion worth of capital spending. We have been working with Federal Way since the beginning, overseeing the development and the quality and the product of documents coming from the design teams and being project management through the permitting process. Throughout our experience, we have developed a collective sense to the effort to plan, design and permit a range of projects, a range of difficulty and complexity with many different jurisdictions. It is with this perspective I'm providing input related to Federal Way Public Schools, projects underway, and recent permitting through the city. District initiated meetings early in 2018 with the city to define requirements for permitting and expectations for submittals and reviews. Target milestones for construction and project schedules in general were provided. General approaches to meet these required dates were discussed, and this kind of set the foundation for this project process. Throughout this process, the district team asked for clarifications on how to apply code requirements for land use and other furnished improvements, and some of this was not clear. These code interpretations with submittals were not always aligned, particularly with water and civil management. Where review comments were received and the design team responded to those, the subsequent submittal comments back from the city changed those requirements again, leaving the A E team to do significant rework to attempt to realign to the city's new changes. This directly delayed these projects and caused taxpayers, taxpayers' dollars. Again, introduction to a changed requirements after responses extended the review cycle for both the building permit and also land use permits. Nearly all these submittals resulted in four-cycle processes. Typically, we see about two or three, so four was, and over four was extreme in our opinion. Based on our experience across similar projects, the permit submittals for these projects were highly quality and a level of completeness to drive, help drive the review process, and we stand by these products. The city engaged a third-party reviewer, which actually support. It's, we think it's a good idea bringing another reviewer in to help when there's a high volume of load. The problem with this scenario is this third party was not allowed the authority to interact with the design team, therefore going back to the city for a whole nother cycle of review, again extending that period of time. I would like to give some examples of other jurisdictions and permit process. For the city of Seattle, when schools come into the city, they kind of fall into a special category, and all schools are expedited through this process. This is done through a online portal process where all the submissions are issued, comments received, and responses to that through this process really stream, streamlines the process, and I would highly recommend Federal Way looking into this. Pre-application meetings are held to focus on code interpretations to set expectations early in the project. Standard timelines are set for reviews and comment periods. Typical cycle gains are two to three cycles. In Federal Way, four or more. It's a little unusual. Building and masteries permits are done concurrently. Your land use, land use, masteries permits are usually done at about fifty percent design development documents with a full land use package. Building permits are done usually at a seventy-five percent construction documents. They're not 100% complete. The only time you come in with 100% complete document typically is if it's a phased project like construction foundation, early site package development practice, such as that. Brand-new ground-up elementary schools in Seattle typically take about eight months for going through the building review process. For master use process, it can vary depending on the complexity, if it's got to go through landmarks, or there might be environmental reviews, it's between nine and fourteen months. Given the much greater scale of operation that the city of Seattle has with similar projects, they're able to do this expeditiously, get it done early compared to Federal Way. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Is there anybody else who would like to submit a pink sheet? Those are the only, oh, come on up, please. Oh, okay. And I believe Allison Taylor is filling one out, too. Okay, Janice Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Deputy Mayor, and the rest of the city council. I am Janice Clark. My name is Janice Clark. I'm a recent, recently moved into Federal Way, and so I pride myself in service, selfless service. I learned that probably through thirty-four years plus serving in the military of Whoos County. And so being here, I felt that I needed to become involved in where I live, work or play, and so I just wanted to introduce myself and tell you who I- just wanted to introduce myself and tell you who I am. I'm excited about working with you. Some of the things I've had and have been challenges that I've overcome, there could be other opportunities, and I look forward to working with the council and you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Linda, for being the first person on another venture to look at me and say, "Girl, I got you." In other words, you're my girl. So she allowed me into her space, and I thank you for that, Linda, and I look forward to our mentorship relationship. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. All right, thanks. Allison Taylor.
Good evening, Council Deputy Mayor. Congratulations. Congratulations on the re-elected council members. I wasn't going to speak, but I realized, you know, they say if you don't put it in writing, it doesn't happen. I think at city council, if you're not on the camera, it didn't happen. So I just want to say, a month ago, I was here under very different circumstances to discuss a resolution having to do with flying special interest flags. I noticed there's a giant interest, special interest flag on the building tonight. Go Niners. But I will say, sorry, not sorry. But I will say, I have never sat in a room the way, and felt the way that I did a month ago. I have never felt targeted the way I felt in this room a month ago. I feel like you may not like me in this community, and we don't always have to like each other, but I think respecting each other and hoping that we can all work together to better our community is really important. I know that it was a painfully contentious meeting, and I know that there was a lot of back and forth about what should be done about that flag. And I think the city council did the right thing. I think they gave it back to the mayor and said, "Mayor, you have the power. Use your power." And I just want to formally say thank you, Mayor Farrell, for determining that in June 2020, we will have the pride flag. It will be flown at City Hall. And that has really sparked the community in a lot of ways. If you haven't been made aware, June 13th, 2020, we will be having a pride festival of some sort. That is all in the works. We have other things going within the queer community, including working on safe spaces for youth and resourcing for the queer community because there's a lot of specific needs around housing and healthcare and things. And all of those things are sparking from sort of the energy that was in that room. And so, I think one thing our community did that night was take some negative energy and turn it into a really positive situation. I think that will continue to grow. And I want to just give credit where credit is due and say, thank you to the city council for talking about it. I know that, you know, I know for Martin Moore, I know you said multiple times you were working on trying to get a pride flag flown. And I appreciate Ryan Call and his presentation about the legality of things. And once again, Mayor, I appreciate you for doing the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. And I bought it. It's back in the office, so we took care of it. So we'll fly it in June, for the entire month of June. All right. I do want to say for those who testified, thank you so much for coming today. For the folks with the school district, thank you very much, actually, for your very thoughtful comments. I've taken them all to heart, and I know our folks have as well. We'll review them thoroughly, and we'll reach out. And we've got a lot of ground to cover. I think it's, you know, we're all working for the same people. And we've got 23,000 young students in this, in this city, in this community, and we all want to make sure that we do right by them, as I know you do as well. So, well, we'll put this together. And thank you so much for your comments. They were very helpful tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember.
I would just humbly request that you keep the council informed, as you have been with this, because obviously, it's an important issue that at least I want to be aware of. So, thank you.
Very good, very good, very good. Okay, thank you. This was a lot of value-added contributions tonight. All right. Thank you, team. So, all right, let's move on to the consent agenda. These items have already, for the most part, have gone through committee. And I'll go ahead and read them, and I'll ask if a council member wants, wants an individual item pulled for separate consideration. Item 5A, minutes for the December 3, 2019, regular meeting minutes, December 11, 2019 legislative breakfast summary. Item B, the Arts Commission 2020 Contract for Services. Item C, Arts Commission 2020 Work Plan. Item D, PSERN, Radio and User Service Level Agreement. Item E, Agreement Between WTSC and the Washington State, excuse me, and the Federal Way Police Department to Provide Grant Funding for Traffic Enforcement. Item F, the 2020-21 Surface Water Management, excuse me, Surface Water Maintenance and Factor Services Contract Authorization to Bid. Item G, Resolution Creating an Advisory Committee, I think that should be Unadvisory Committee, Creating Unadvisory Committee for the North Lake Management District Number Two and Establishing Duties Thereof. Item H, Military Road, South 298th Street Compact Roundabout Project Acceptance. Item I, Joint Construction Agreement Between the City of Federal Way and Puget Sound Energy. Item J, 2019 Asphalt Overlay Project Final Acceptance. Item K, 2019 Storm Pipe Repair Phase One Project Acceptance. Item L, 2018 NHS Preservation Project Final Acceptance. Council, are there any individual items that you would want pulled for separate consideration? Hearing no motion. Deputy Mayor Honda, do you have a motion?
I move approval of Items A through L on the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Spin a motion to second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matters passed unanimously. Okay, council business. Proposed settlement regarding Gogol, the Gogol matter. First, we'll have a brief report by Ryan Call, our city attorney.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. As you know, we've discussed this case repeatedly in closed executive sessions, so I'm not going to go through a formal presentation on all of the details of the lawsuit, because a lot of it is confidential. However, as we have discussed and been authorizing it previously, I, my outside civil litigation council has negotiated resolution to this matter. That is an amount of $25,000 for general and special damages to be paid out of risk management funds. Just so the public is generally aware of what this lawsuit was about, one of our officers was driving in the city at 9th and 336th, late at night, and was making a left turn. And what is undisputed is that he struck Mr. Gogol in a crosswalk. What is disputed, and we're still not clear, is whether or not Mr. Gogol had a lock sign or not. So that was part of the reason that we were settling this matter. The amount of $25,000 reflects largely his actual medical costs. So if council has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, the mayor's recommendation is to pass, to authorize the settlement.
Council, any questions? All right, hearing none. Deputy Mayor Honda, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do. I move approval of the proposed settlement in the matter of Gogol versus City of Federal Way in the amount of $25,000.
Second.
Spin a motion to second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matters passed unanimously. Thank you, Ryan. Okay, next, we've got ordinances. First reading, Council Bill 772. And it's the North Lake Management District Number Two establishing the time of payment, interest, and penalties to be imposed on delinquent annual special assessments. First, we'll have a staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, and engaged members of the public. I'm a little bummed more people didn't stay for this very exciting presentation. So I am here. My name is Leah Myrie. I am the Surface Water Quality Program Coordinator for the city, and I'm here on behalf of the North Lake Management District this evening to discuss the ordinance on the delinquent assessments. The policy question before you is, should council adopt an ordinance establishing the time of payment, interest, and penalties to be imposed on delinquent annual special assessments for the North Lake Management District Number Two? So for those of you who do not know, although those of you on the dais all know what a lake management district is, I hope by now, because you've been hearing a lot from me, it is a form of a special service district, much like an HOA, that can collect funds from lake area property owners to be able to fund special activities on the lake, such as aquatic vegetation management or water quality monitoring. So the renewal process to date, again, this list just keeps getting longer, which is lovely, but we are almost to the end. As you see, we've been here about a year through all of the petition, public hearings, and now to the final ordinance. So the public hearing on assessments was held on November 5 of last year. That did provide the public with an opportunity to file objections to the proposed assessments, whether the amounts or the method. And so, that, the resolution approving and confirming that assessment role was approved that evening. And so now, the final step is just kind of setting a bit more guidelines about those assessments as far as time of payment, what the penalties are for non-payment, and then delinquent assessments. So the annual assessments, they are billed annually through the King County Assessor. All property owners within the previously established boundary of the renewed LMD do pay an assessment based on their property type, whether that's residential or commercial, vacant, developed. And then, all of this annual revenue, as I mentioned, does fund the annual activities of the lake management district, which, again, include water quality monitoring, education and outreach, really great activities that help the lake stay healthy. So, delinquent assessments. If a property owner does not pay their annual assessment by the deadline of May 10th each year, it is subject to interest of 1% per month, a penalty of 5% of the assessment total, which is the minimum that is allowed by state code. And there is an automatic lien against the property that is automatically, again, lifted once payment occurs. Now, if left unpaid for more than three years, King County may begin foreclosure proceedings. This has not happened with any of the properties on either Steel or North Lake that have a lake management district, but it is an option if the county wanted to pursue that. So, next steps. So, if council chooses to forward the ordinance for a second reading, that will occur at the January 21 city council meeting. Tonight, we did have the adoption, or the resolution for the, for the advisory committee. And so, in January and February, we are going to have open recruitment for the advisory committee for the renewed LMD. In March, probably at the second council meeting, we will have appointment of that advisory committee. And then, in April, we'll begin assessment collection through King County to begin all of the great activities for the renewed LMD. So the options considered before you are to forward the proposed ordinance to second reading at the January 21 city council meeting, or do not adopt the proposed ordinance and provide direction to staff. The mayor recommends option one, and I did want to note at the December committee meeting for LUTC, the committee did unanimously recommend adoption of the proposed ordinance. And if there are any questions, or a citizen comment, I believe comes first, but I will leave that to you.
Let's do the questions for the council first.
Okay, great.
Do you have any questions, Leah? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. If someone doesn't pay their, their fees, and how soon would you put a lien on the property? Wouldn't be very soon, would it?
So it's after May 10. It just automatically kind of happens in King County's system. So the assessor is just basically like non-payment by a certain day. If they don't pay it by that May 10th deadline, then that automatic lien begins, and then the 1% interest per month. That generally kind of occurs, I'm guessing, about June 1st, when that would reset in their financial system, is what I've heard from our representative there. We do send out reminder notices. Of course, you know, our advisory committees for both lake management districts, you know, obviously, these funds are what they rely on to, you know, do all of their activities. And so, we send out reminder letters in late summer to all of the list of delinquent properties, and then again in November. And normally, we have very high collection rates in the 90 percentile, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions, council? Okay, thank you, Leah. Are there any citizen comments? Any citizen comment? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Leah.
Great, thank you. You'll see me again in March.
Thank you. If not before. All right. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 772, An Ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington Establishing the Time of Payment, Interest, and Penalties to Be Imposed on Delinquent Annual Special Assessments for the North Lake Management District Number Two.
All right. Councilmember Copeng, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move to forward the proposed ordinance to the January 21, 2020 council meeting for second reading and enactment.
Second.
Spin a motion to second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter passes first reading. Now it's on to second. Council reports. Councilmember Sepadassin.
Thank you, Mayor. And I have, I don't have a report. I just want to say I'm glad to be back and looking forward to another great year of service here. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
Just really briefly, just want to offer my prayers for troops. Tonight, a lot of folks have probably heard, but there was some attacks overseas, and so just want to offer my prayers.
Here, here. Councilmember Tran.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to congratulate Deputy Mayor Honda and welcome Linda, Mark, and Leah back. And I'm looking forward to working with you in the next two years. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Copeng.
Yeah, I, thank you, Mayor. I was, obviously, we had the holidays, and I was kind of looking back at all the things that have happened in the last, the last month and a half. And there's been a lot. And it's gonna, I think there's a couple notable things I wanted to mention. The first was the Federal Way Cares Christmas event that happened at Lakota, and again, is a great community event where the fire department and the city and with a number of community members joined together to create great Christmas experiences for a lot of the less fortunate members of our community. So, again, this, this was the Grace Church spearheaded this again this year, did a phenomenal job. The volunteers were outstanding and energized, and they really did work very hard to create a wonderful experience. Really was very fortunate to, or really felt privileged to be a part of their efforts. Also, I did a ride-along with the police department, and, you know, it's really, I think, to get an understanding of the city from that perspective, I think is something that anybody that's interested in, in our city really should do. We have very professional officers that really do care about our community, and I really want to make sure that it's a safe community. So, again, I was, I was very, very impressed with the, the quality of my time with the officer and the insight I was able to gain as a, as a, as a product of that time spent together. The last thing I wanted to mention, and this is something that really is, it's something that, that has been a labor of love for Jeanette Brizendeen and some members of the community, that's the Tool Library. And the Tool Library is, it's a great community resource where members will, a member of the community, members of the community will be able to borrow tools. When they talk, when you talk about, about tool libraries, really what you're doing is you're creating, basically from about, you know, collective of about six households' worth of tools, enough for 30 or 40 different organizations to be able to use it. So, again, it's a great multiplication of effort, and I know I'm guilty. I have tools in my garage. I only use very rarely, but when I need them, I'm glad I have them. Not everybody can afford to have them or to store them. So, for them to be able to, for people to be able to utilize a resource such as the Tool Library, it's going to be a great community benefit. So, again, I wanted to thank the volunteers. I know Dwight and Shirley Pauls were there. Jerry Galand, I saw, Jack Walsh. Deputy Mayor Honda was there, supporting the effort. So, again, I think it's a, it's a great community event and a lot of passion and effort. I want to thank, I think Amanda, I can't remember Amanda's name right now, but she was spearheading that and did a great job as well. So, really have some great people engaged in creating a wonderful resource for our community going forward.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I, as Councilmember Copeng just stated, we've had a break for the last several weeks, so I can safely and confidently say that I missed you guys. And I know that you guys missed me. I got hundreds of texts from my colleagues and calls. I could just really tell they missed me a lot. But it is good to be back here, off to a great start of 2020. Good meeting today. And over the break, you know, I just want to say thank you. Thank you to, you know, I think we all recognize how special of a community Federal Way truly is, and how much of a giving community we really are. But, you know, there was a fire at the Twin Lakes Apartments on 320th, and I put out a call for the public to see if they wanted to donate. And I wanted to say thank you to Dan Olmstead and Alice, owners of Poverty Bay. They were the holding location for all the donation, donated goods for the fires. Obviously, our condolences are to the family that was impacted with the, with the tragedy, but also the families that have been impacted by the fire as well. So, we're very thankful, and I'm so thankful to the community members that have donated many items to support that effort and to help bring dignity back to, to. many items to support that effort and to help bring dignity back to, to our families. Obviously, Councilor Copeng also talked about the break-in at the Tool Library. What a frustrating, it's very frustrating, because there are people out there that just don't care, and, and they can ruin a lot of good things that, that good people do in our community. And so, put out a call to see if people wanted to make a donation, and we raised $160. And so, a huge shout-out to those people that have donated there. And so, needs are everywhere. I mean, I, also, I had, in December, I had our community dinners that I'm going to start holding every so often, and we're going to focus on a cause. And so, in December, we had our first community dinner, and we focused on the Day Center, and we brought in bath towels and toe warmers and hand warmers, and, and really just want to say thank you to the community members that joined us for dinner. And a shout-out to Councilor Sephedosan and Councilor Copeng for spearheading that with me. And so, it was just fun. We just got together, broke bread, you know, had dinner together, and just talked. And it was just incredible to sit back and watch that happen while also supporting the Federal Way Day Center. And I did talk to Mrs. Drake and Sue Drake, I believe, and, you know, their washer and dryers, their washers are broken. So, that's a need that they're looking to, to troubleshoot. So, I look forward to partnering with them and seeing what I can do to, to help. So, we are a giving community, and I just, I find myself grateful for the people that live in Federal Way that think of others and put others first before themselves. And so, thank you to, to all that. Congratulations to Councilwoman Johnson. He was one of the appointee members that was selected by the Democratic Party to fill in, is in the process, for Representative Reeves. And so, wanted to do a shout-out there. It's a pretty big accomplishment so far. I know that the process is still going to take place. And also, by the way, Councilor Coach Mar, my reports tend to be long, so Councilwoman Duclo was, was used to this, so. But, also wanted to congratulate Council Deputy Mayor Honda for her getting re-elected. I know we had a good meeting earlier today, and I've seen good leadership come from you. And, you know, I, I'm very confident that you'll become a stronger leader, and I know that you'll work well with all of us, so congratulations for getting re-elected, and I look forward to continuing to work together on challenging issues that, that we're faced with here. So, congratulations. And with that, I will hand it back to the Mayor. I also congratulate Councilor, I will hand it to Councilmember Coach Mar. It is really neat, by the way, to sit next to Councilmember Co, uh, Coach Mar, I wanted to say Representative Coach Mar, Mayor Coach Mar, but it is Councilmember Coach Mar, because I was in high school when she served on the City Council. So, it's really awesome to be able to sit next to her. But, so there's a lot of wisdom in history that I look forward to working with, so congratulations.
Councilwoman Coach Mar.
The very first thing I did was pour him a glass of water, so that he wouldn't be... I understand there was an issue there with Deanie, but it's, it's, it's a privilege to be back on the Council. And I do want to congratulate all of you. I absolutely think it's a wonderful way to start out the year, being, what do I want to say? Homogenous. We're all working together, and the only way we're going to get anything down is to work together. We're going to have four to three votes. We're going to, I've been the recipient of six to one votes many times, and the trick after that is to shake hands and go have a drink. But, we never do that, but anyway, and I don't even drink. But, anyway, I'm, I'm very pleased that we've started out this way. And, you know, it is, the time we have on the Council is so short. It really goes by so fast. And so, really thank you, Mayor Farrell, for your willingness to talk about lobbying at the federal level. I really want to go get them. And I'm worried about lobbying at the state level, so hopefully, Jesse, we'll get there before we, so we have some people to talk to. And then, I do want to work about, that we meet with the school board, because I understand we're not doing that right now, and I'm not sure how that's not happening, but I did talk to School Board Director Lakeisha tonight about making sure we get those moving, so that we can get some of these issues talked about. And so, and then, want to work regionally, you know, with the port issues. I spent ten years sitting on the airport community's coalition, and can't believe we're still talking about it, but anyway. So, if we started that, let's see, that would have been twenty years ago. If we started that, we would have a second regional airport by now, which we don't. So, anyway, so glad to be back on the Council. Have a lot of things I'd like to get involved in, and I will try to work out with all of you on that. And believe me, I have a phone that has phone numbers in it that are federal, that are state, that are regional. They owe me. So, use me.
Is Obama on there?
No, sorry. I did have school kids ask me if I ever saw the President when I met at DC, and I said, "Nobody saw the bathrooms." I got to go in the private areas. No, no Presidents. But anyway, thank you. Thank you for letting me be part of this Council. And I really do think we have a very hard-working staff who needs to have a raise, and so, I want to bring some revenue in, so we can make sure that happens. Anyway, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome back, Councilmember. All right, Deputy Mayor Honda.
Thank you. I want to welcome Councilmember Coach Mar back. I haven't said that yet tonight. And congratulate Councilmember Sephedosan and Councilmember Copeng on your reelections, and looking forward to a really exciting 2020, because we're going to have more revenue in 2020.
Yes.
And we're going to do the budget in 2020. Yes. So, it's going to be an exciting year. For Federal Way Cares for Kids, I do want to give a shout-out to the Seropnumus Club of Federal Way, which I am in. But we provided and donated the photo booth for the children and the families to have Santa Claus pictures taken. And every family stopped by our booth, and I was the little elf that set children on Santa's lap, and after an hour, I was completely exhausted. I couldn't do that for eight hours, because I know people do that. But it was fun, and thank you, Katrina, for providing the camera and the computer and all of your technical things that you did for us, because the families have beautiful photos to remember their day by. And looking forward to 2020. And I think the Mayor has something to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and congratulations again. Yes, actually, speaking of the process that unfolded last Saturday, where our own Council member was selected as the number one out of three possible choices to go to the joint session of a King County and Pierce County session, I, as, as you know, I included you on the email offer over to the leadership of the King County Council to suggest that Federal Way, these chambers and Federal Way City Council be utilized for that joint session. We, that, that invitation has been accepted, and the meeting will be held next Monday, the 13th. Jesse, just so you know. And, exactly, and it'll be at 1:30 PM in these council chambers. And so, we're very excited that the King County Council and the Pierce County Council will be jointly meeting here to help quickly resolve the issue of who our next state representative will be. And we're very hopeful for you, and good luck. All right, with that, great, great meeting to start the year off, everyone, and I hope you have a happy and safe evening, weekend, and the next two weeks before we see each other again. This meeting is adjourned.